Before we get started, I want to wish Commissioner Benega a happy early birthday. And we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have meeting documents available for review next to Commissioner Hyburger. Please remember to silence your cell phones this morning. And Carol is here this morning if you need a listening device. So that takes us to routine business. Item one, I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion approved. Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Second item is to approve the commission meeting minutes for September 22nd, 2020.
Move for approval?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $1,168,944.87.
Pay the bills.
Pay the bills.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Sheriff?
Commissioner Barth.
Today's bills include $222,000 for highway project, Highway 146 to 103, $192,000 for 911 transferred, and then $197,000 in construction things still related to the jail.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are reports. We have the Minnehaha County Regional Detention Center statistics for August 2020, which is a good report, chock full of information. Next item are personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So move. Benega?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, item six, abatements. There are none. Item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. So that takes us to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here today for public comment? Doesn't appear to be anyone here today. That takes us to item 10, which is a public hearing and second reading for ordinance text amendment number 20-03. Kevin Hookman, good morning.
Good morning. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. So this item is a text amendment number 2003. County staff received an application from South Dakota Manufactured Housing Association to amend regulations for the placement of manufactured homes for the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County. The primary concern for the request is for the current regulation requires a perimeter foundation, which would be around the entire perimeter of the mobile home.
It's passed. It'll be over soon.
If you're attending via Zoom, if it's possible for you to put yourself on mute, that would be helpful. Thank you.
And the request is to amend this to replace the current requirements for a more HUD standard with the standard skirting requirements from HUD. In addition to the perimeter foundation and skirting, there are also performance standards for the skirting itself that requires that it's not going to corrode or fall apart very quickly. Staff also made a few changes, and I'll just bring up the whole ordinance change here. With the highlighted portion being the changes, it's kind of hard to tell, but it's that requirement number three that is going to be the primary change with then staff clarified requirement number two, for example, where it just required the mobile home to be 22 feet, and now it says wide at this narrow side, showing that, okay, it's not going to be a perimeter of 22 feet. It just clarifies the ordinance. To show an example of the footing of the current system, the mobile homes are typically placed on a pier system on the interior part of the mobile home, with then the exterior having the skirting. And our current requirement requires the trench footing or some sort of footing to frost depth with the foundation wall up to the side. The proposed text amendment was presented to the Planning Commission at the August 24th Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission unanimously voted to approve the proposed amendments. This is the second reading for the zoning text amendment, which requires the public hearing and action. The Board of Commissioners may vote to amend, approve, or deny the proposed zoning ordinance amendments, and this will be MC 1616820. So is there any questions?
Commissioner Hyburger?
I'm looking at your picture. So just to clarify, because I'm not quite sure, on the left-hand side is what you're proposing, and on the right-hand side is what was before?
So this is both the current system. So where, so a mobile home, if you have your square or rectangle, the outside of that rectangle is currently required to have this trench footing and a foundation wall, with the intent, I think, to make the manufactured home look more like a regular house, because then you see that concrete wall in the front of the house. But the manufacturers only require the piers to be part of the, to support the house. So that foundation wall that goes to the frost is not required to make the manufactured home sit correctly.
Commissioner Hyburger?
So you're taking away the foundation wall and just putting the piers in, and then just putting skirting around it?
Correct.
Commissioner Karski?
Called Scott and had a good conversation yesterday, because I was a little wondering, how often is this change going to affect or impact any homes in the county? And it doesn't sound like it's going to be a real broad, you know, affect developments that currently exist. My understanding is probably the most common application of it would be where somebody puts this type of a home in a farmyard, you know, mom and dad have the house, and the, one of the kids wants to, you know, farm with them and have a home in the same property, and they have an eligibility. So it's going to be mostly next to somebody that's very accepting of it. It's not going to be impacting existing developments and homes. And obviously, it's only going to apply outside of municipalities that don't have their own zoning laws that are affected by this. So I appreciate Scott taking the time yesterday to talk to me, and it really clarified a lot for me. And I'm comfortable with the changes that the zoning board has come up with.
Commissioner Benega?
Kevin, can you tell me what the estimated cost would be by changing this?
I don't know that I can. I believe a representative of the petitioner maybe can in a little bit. But to Dean's point, I did pull the numbers. From 2010 to our current position, our current time this year, we have had five manufactured home permits in the county. From 1998 to 2009, there were 56. So this is a, isn't, are on a declining part of our county's building permits. I'll also note that these are only manufactured homes that are not in a mobile home park. So they also require a conditional use permit still, even with these changes. So at the Planning Commission level, if it's a house being placed in like a development, we could still require the sort of change or aesthetic changes to the house as part of the Planning Commission process.
Anything else for Kevin? All right, so this is a public hearing, and if there's anyone here in favor of this proposed amendment, this would be your opportunity to come forward and speak. If you could just give your name and address, please.
Good morning. My name is Alan Spencer. My address is 2405 Slay Creek Trail in Sioux Falls. I'm a manufactured housing dealer, have been for 30 years. I'm a board member of the South Dakota Manufactured Housing Association, and I'm also a volunteer for HUD. There's eight people in the country that give guidance to HUD on codes and updates of their requirements and processes. Excuse me, a little hoarse this morning. It's not COVID, I don't think. Hopefully not. Excuse me. So this change really does two things. One, as the diagram shows, the perimeter foundation would be removed in this case. An alternative and a code compliant foundation cover would be replaced with. And I've got just a couple of samples. The one in the front would be, the one that's made out of wood would be used, would be made out of treated lumber. In the cases where you have grade changes, where you might want to put dirt up against the manufactured home. And the other one is an enclosure that actually sits underneath the unit. It's an insulated enclosure that, so the top of the house to the bottom would be continuous from the siding to the ground. It's installed, it's installed on site after the home is placed. So to your question on the costs, so the current requirement has, we have footings over footings. So there's $6,000 to $8,000, depending on the application, how it's done, and who the contractor is, $6,000 to $8,000 of additional costs around the perimeter that serves no purpose. So this would eliminate that and save the customer some costs. And certainly, typically, the product is used in a situation where budgets are tight potentially, and is, it is affordable product that we have. That's number one. The other thing that, it's not hidden, but it's in the change that's significant to the county and the customers, is the requirement to meet some codes. So it's 3285, subpart D, deals with foundation designs, how they're applied, how they're installed. It also deals with flooding, type of visqueen on the ground. So there's more, there's more code requirements that are added to your current zoning ordinance that goes a long ways to benefiting the customer in the long term, and also requires some additional steps to make sure the house is compliant. The other side to this, too, is currently, you may be aware, may not be aware, in the last five years, South Dakota now is a default state in HUD standards. So any installation anywhere in the state, whether it's in the city or county or whatever, requires a licensed installer, and also requires a third-party inspection. So the change we take place just dovetails right into the 3285, which is the manual that the manufacturers use and the installers use to place the manufactured home, make sure it meets all HUD codes, and then meets the inspection requirements. So I said a lot there, but I just wanted to give you a little background on the change. So it's not just the foundation, it's bringing in 3285, part D.
Any questions? Commissioner Benega?
Mr. Spencer, does the new format add to the longevity of the structure, so to speak?
The structure itself has, when it leaves the manufacturing facility, has to meet all HUD code requirements. So 3285 is dealing with the actual set. So it's theoretically from the bottom of the home to the ground, and then also everything inside it. If it's, in this case, they'd be multi-section units. Anything that we need to do onsite to make sure that it's tied together properly, and wind resistance, and watertight, things like that. So does it add to the life of the unit? No, it doesn't detract from either. So how is this, need to be built to the current HUD standards?
I guess I ask those questions because manufacturing housing is an alternative to a more expensive possibility, and I don't really feel comfortable adding significant costs, but you've already indicated that that's not going to happen.
No, no, actually, it will alleviate some costs for the customer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here today who would like to speak in favor of this proposed amendment? So sir, you either need to choose whether you want to speak in favor, or you want to speak opposed to that, and then you'll need to come to the microphone and give your name and your address, please. So right now, we're having the people who are in favor of the amendment speak. Okay.
My name is Gary Dirksen. I'm an owner of a manufactured home, and I'm in favor of the changes that are being asked for. My home is a 2001, and it's got everything that a regular house has. It's got the two-by-six walls, the vinyl siding, shingled roof. I mean, everything is the same as a regular house. It's just it comes in on a frame, and the frame stays under it. Instead of, you know, like a modular home comes in, they take the frame off. But mine, the frame stays on it. So I mean, there's no real changes to anything as far as the house goes, because if you're going to set it on a permanent foundation, you still have to have the cement structure in the middle to the frame to hold it level so it doesn't shift on you, just like a regular house. So you're still having a footing in the ground.
Did you have a question you wanted to ask?
Yeah, I'm trying to find out if I can put a trailer house in Lyons, South Dakota, where the old schoolhouse is. I want to move my house out there.
Okay. I think that's something you need to work with planning and zoning on, Scott? Yep.
Because they told, they told me I had, there's a rule that says you can't put them in there. And that's why he told me they were having a commissioners' meeting today, and I should apply, come and talk to you guys.
Okay. So Scott Anderson and Kevin Hookman back in the corner after we're done here, or you guys could go out and visit, and they'll be able to help you with that?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else that is here that would like to speak in favor of this amendment? Anyone who is opposed to this amendment? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this amendment? All right, so I guess we don't need a rebuttal. Nobody's going to speak in opposition to it. Any further conversation? We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for your work on that. All right, so that takes us to item 11, which is to consider a motion to adopt the final 2021 budget. Carol Muller?
Carol Muller, Commission Office. I apologize, I came up without my glasses. Important for the numbers to give you. Before you today is the request to authorize the adoption of the Minnehaha County 2021 budget, which needs to be done by the end of September of each year. A few highlights on this. The total budget is $113,293,582. That includes $20 million in capital projects for replacement and renovation of county facilities, including the administrative building that we're currently in at this point. Positions were very minimal this year. You had two positions that you moved from grant-funded to general funds. Those positions include a corporal within the jail and a deputy sheriff in the sheriff's office. Two new positions were approved, a paralegal within the public defender's office, and a correctional systems operator within the jail. And importantly, you did not access any of the additional opt-out dollars that you approved last year. The one thing that I just want to mention that our finance officer put together, which I thought was great, is a comparison of the general fund, building fund, and bond redemption levies. Those levies total 3.322 for 2021, which is the lowest levy rate since 2013, and is a decrease of 6%.
Thank you. Comments? Questions? We've had an opportunity to visit about this a number of times, and I think the closing remarks by Carol are all very good news. It's always good to be able to go to the taxpayers and tell them that our property tax levies are actually going to be less for next year with this budget, so.
I guess.
Commissioner Karski?
And it's great, 6% decrease. I mean, thanks to the staff and everybody for really coming together and working on this. The other thing we're doing is we're not doing it at an expense. We're actually funding stuff like the accrual of our payroll going forward, so that we don't have this issue every six, seven years where we have an extra pay period, and that costs hundreds of thousands or even millions of dollars, I guess, in payroll expense. So we're not doing it in, cutting into the bone. We are taking care of things properly, and it's a budget I'm proud to say that we worked on, and I want to thank all the people that were involved in making it happen.
Anyone else? All right, well, I'd consider a motion, then.
Motion approved.
Second?
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. I would echo Commissioner Karski's remarks. I mean, it takes, you know, proverbial village to put together a budget. It's a lot of months of very hard work, and I don't want to call out anybody in particular for risking minimizing the efforts of others. But I would be remiss in not particularly thanking Kim Adams, and she does a lot of heavy lifting on the budget. She's had a lot on her plate this year with two elections and everything else. So I really want to thank her for all the work she's done in putting together, as Commissioner Karski said, a very responsible, forward-looking budget that's still very fiscally responsible. So, all right, that takes us to item 12. Consider a motion to approve the five-year transportation plan in accordance with the BIG fund requirements, and authorize the chair to sign the 2021 to 2025 certification form. DJ Boothey?
Good morning, Commissioner. This is DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. As you know, we participate pretty actively in the state's Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Program. As part of the requirements for that program, every year we have to adopt an updated five-year plan and keep that current in order to apply for grants for bridge improvements and bridge replacements. And so we had a public meeting on September 17th. We sent out over 150 invitations for the meeting, and we had less than 10 people attend that meeting. All the attendees this year were from township, and so that's pretty typical. We only see a couple of people every year. But we did host the meeting. We presented what projects we plan on working on in the next five years. We go through our five-year plan, and we look at the next couple of years pretty closely, but we're always revising our plan based on the condition of the structures, the new bridge inspections that we receive. And so we have a pretty good idea of what we're planning for replacements, but our preventive maintenance, our smaller projects that we're doing on the bridges, that really changes every single year. So it's important to update this five-year plan. In the packet that was presented, it includes some budget information, the five-year plan, so the projects that we intend on working on for each of the five years, and then the sign-in sheet for the meeting that was held. I want to make notes of, or note of, three different corrections that need to be made. On the third page, there's a spreadsheet that shows projected revenues and sources. The invested interest for 2021 is shown at $20,000. That should actually read $10,000. And the permit fees for 2021 is shown as a revenue of $30,000. That should read $40,000. The prorate port of entry revenue for 2021 reads $400,000. That should read $424,000. So the total county revenue for 2021, it reads $13,724,331. What's actually approved in our budget and what this should say in the updated document is $13,748,331. Other than that, the information presented is correct. We went through a budget revision a couple of months ago with the Highway Department Fund, and we're projecting the end of next year to be about $2.5 million in our highway fund. And then every year remaining in our five-year plan, we're projecting to be about $3 million. So we're back on track with the highway fund, and this is our project list. There's a map on the fifth page, I think, in your packet, and that shows the major projects that are presented in the five-year plan. But I will stand by for any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Hyburger?
Just a point of clarification, DJ. So when you talked about the investment interest permit fees and the prorated port of entry, is it just for 2021 that you wanted those numbers increased, or across the board, those increases for each year?
That's just for 2021 that those numbers need to be corrected.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for DJ? DJ, I'm wondering, I had an opportunity to visit with DJ yesterday. I'm wondering if you could just help refresh our memories about why it is that we essentially adopt this five-year transportation plan twice every year?
Okay. So during our regular county budget process, that usually starts in April or so, the Highway Department puts together a five-year plan, and that really helps us identify what our county budget will be for the Highway Department. And then the Department of Transportation, well, the state legislature in 2015 passed legislation that introduced the Bridge Improvement Grant Program. And as part of the rules for the Bridge Improvement Grant Program, the state decided that it would be in the county's best interest to have a five-year plan that's updated annually, and in order to manage the infrastructure, the bridge infrastructure throughout the state. And with their requirements, they require the commission to adopt the five-year plan under the state's format for the five-year plan that they require with the program. And so not only do we develop a five-year plan for our own budgeting purposes, April through July or so, but then we revise that and update it and submit it as a state submittal in September for the Bridge Improvement Grant Program. So we'd really go through the same process twice. It looks a little bit different because of the reporting requirements that the state requires, and the numbers are all basically the same numbers, but it looks a little bit different. The format is different for both of the five-year plans. But the projects remain the same, other than any kind of adjustments that we make in the actual projects. If we shift one project from one year to the next, or something like that.
All right, thank you. All right, if there are no other questions, I'd consider a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, DJ. I think you have the next one as well, which is to consider a motion to authorize the Highway Department to advertise a two-day free pickup event for various salvage materials at the gravel pit. DJ?
Okay, Commissioner, so throughout the last several years, we've just had an accumulation of various concrete pipe sections, concrete bridge planks, and just concrete rubble from projects, things that we've worked on with the Highway Department Maintenance Crew and contracted projects when we replaced culverts. In the past, we hadn't been taking them to the landfill because of the tipping fees for that type of material. And so we had a waste area at our gravel pit that most of that material would be hauled to. It really has no value to us, or anyone else for that matter, as far as recycling it or anything like that. But due to the exorbitant tipping fees that we would be charged at the landfill, we are requesting authorization to advertise for a two-day free pickup event. And in talking with some contractors and some landowners, some farmers would like to use some of the pipe sections that we have for stream crossings within their farm fields, and we think that that's an acceptable use. Some contractors would like to take some of this concrete rubble and crush it, crush it to use crushed concrete on some of their projects. And so they, there would be a use for some of this material. What we were proposing is that when landowners or contractors come to this two-day event, they sign a waiver of liability, so the county is not held responsible. We will help them load the materials onto their trailers. They strap down the materials and leave, and they can dispose of the concrete pieces however they wish to at that point. They can use it in their farm field, or they can crush it and have crushed concrete material and use that instead of gravel. And so that's what we're proposing. If you have any questions, I'll stand by.
Any questions for DJ? Commissioner Benega?
DJ, what's the cost of the disposal fee at the landfill?
We ran an estimate this morning. We're thinking about $10,000 of tipping fees, and that's based on the pipe sections that we have and how much they weigh. We measured each- We measured each pipe section and using tables, we determined how much each pipe section weighed. We added all that up and then estimated some of the bridge plank and rubble material that we have. Because we don't have the actual weight of that, it's just an estimate. And then the county land, or the regional landfill has posted construction and demolition debris tipping fees posted. And so, we estimated about $10,000 worth of tipping fees that we'd be saving by doing this event.
So, if you don't get rid of all the accumulated salvage that you have there, what are you going to do with that?
We have a couple of different options. We could leave it there. It's been sitting there for years, most of it has been. Or we could take it to the landfill and pay the tipping fees. We've been trying to clean up this gravel pit area the last couple of years. There was a lot of debris and garbage and stuff accumulating. And varmints can house in this debris and it can just become an issue. And it doesn't look very good. And so, with the new law enforcement shooting range out there, we're just trying to clean up the gravel pit and make it so it's not so messy.
Thank you.
Anything, any other questions for DJ? All right, I entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please. Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thanks, DJ. All right, that takes us to item 14, which is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Precision Kiosk Technology to provide breathalyzer kiosks in the 24/7 lobby. Good morning.
High Commissioner Lieutenant Kurt Shawman here. I am requesting the commission to sign the contract with PKT that's going to provide kiosks in the lobby at 24/7 so participants can do a breathalyzer test on the kiosk. They can also do pre-trial check-ins, probation check-ins, any of that stuff, so... We're looking to get three of them in the 24/7 lobby.
Thank you. Any questions? I know this is something you guys have been working on for quite a while.
It has been.
So, this would be helpful for a lot of people, helpful for our staff to be able to get people moved through and get the services that they need.
Especially with the pandemic, people taking a breathalyzer test and blowing air at all the test spaces. Isn't that sanitary?
I'd make a motion to approve the contract.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Thanks for coming this morning. All right, that takes us to item 15, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports today?
Commissioner.
Commissioner Barth. I see you.
We had a planning and zoning meeting last night that only went till nine o'clock. But we had some routine items like two daycares and some eligibility transfers. But we had a bit of a discussion about expanding the sand and quarry and gravel pits north of Corson. And while there was some interesting discussion, we did in fact approve it at the end. I don't know if it will be appealed or not. But one issue that came up that I've never heard before in my ears on there is will the blasting disturb the eagles in the area? And it was decided that it would not at this point, but it was a new issue.
All right, well, thank you. Once again, thank you for your service and for the folks that volunteered to serve on that. You guys put in a lot of work. Anybody else? I would just note that I think we finally got a full complement of people committed to be on the new Ahab Board, the replacement for the homeless advisory board. And those names will be brought forward next Tuesday to the commission for approval so we can start that group being active, which will be great. And the other thing that I was going to mention is that the committee working on the administrative building remodel, we received four responses to the RFP for architects. And so, we've decided to interview all four of those. And that will be the second week, I believe, in October. So, that's coming up as well. It's good to see that project moving forward too, so... All right. There are no other liaison reports. Item 16 is new business. Any new business? Seeing none. Item 17 is old business. Any old business?
You already brought that up, so happy birthday, Commissioner.
All right, I was much kinder about it. I'd entertain a motion to recess.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
I think the motion passed four to one. All right, so...
I'm going to hold for recess.
We'll reconvene about 9:45. So, thank you, thanks, everyone. Thanks for coming this morning.